Yeah, let me get here. There we go.
Row call.
Festerson.
Here.
Goodwin.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Hug.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Rowe.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Don Rowe.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most of you know that in addition to my work here at the city, I work at Millard Lumber out in southwest Omaha. And about a little over 10 years ago, I hired a young guy to come work with us. And we get together several times a week, you know, for the last 10 years, and just grab a cup of coffee and kind of chat about what's going on in the world. And our discussions might be as mundane as getting a truckload of siding shipped to a project in Arkansas, or as shocking as the murder of a young man in Utah. Every day, it's something different. Last week, we were talking about Martin Luther King Jr. On April 4th, 1968, our country lost that prominent civil rights leader. Hours after that horrific shooting, Robert F. Kennedy walked out on the stage in the heart of Indianapolis and delivered the news to the crowd. It wasn't the campaign speech that they were expecting. Fifty-seven years later, we're still suffering from disillusionment, strife, and lack of national unity. Whether it be in our neighborhoods, in our cities, our states, we focus more on what separates us than what makes us a diverse but loved community. So today, I ask that we lead with intention, that we lead with compassion, and that we lead with a servant heart and soul for the betterment of our community. Robert F. Kennedy, RFK, ended his speech that night in Indianapolis with a quotation that he borrowed from Edith Hamilton. And a quote, "Let us dedicate ourselves to what the Greeks wrote so many years before, to tame the savageness of man and make gentle the life of this world." Let us dedicate ourselves to that and say a prayer for our country and for our people.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate and conduct our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. A reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If you would like your comments entered into the public record, you can email the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. The council members receive these emails and we read them. Finally, council members may ask members of the audience back up for clarifying questions, but not for extra time to speak. I would like to remind council members and people in the public to speak clearly into their microphones so the audience members in attendance and at home can hear us. We have two proclamations today we're going to read. The first one is by Councilmember Levania Goodwin.
Thank you, President Begley. And if I may have the representatives of Ivy Black Girl approach the podium, please. Good afternoon, Ms. Renchie. This proclamation is for the awareness of Black Maternity Health Month. And so it reads, whereas the month of October is an opportunity to recognize the profound contributions of Black-led organizations, healthcare professionals, advocates, and community leaders who are at the forefront of improving maternal health outcomes and creating a more equitable system of care. And whereas Black women are disproportionately affected by the nation's maternal mortality rate, being more than three times as likely to die from pregnancy-related complication as white women, regardless of their income, education, or other socioeconomic factors, including living in areas of high poverty and lacking access to reliable and affordable transportation. And whereas multiple factors, including discriminatory treatment from providers, limited access to quality care, and broad inequalities in health-led, in health, lead to complications during pregnancy and contribute to Black infants having a higher rate of death during birth. And whereas we can deepen the conversation about Black maternal health in our community and amplify driven research, policy, and care solutions while centering the voices of Black mothers, women's, and family with the values and traditions of the reproductive birth justice movement. And whereas Black Maternal Health Month is a time for action in which communities are encouraged to commit to equity of care for Black women, assuring them of their dignity and well-being before, during, and after pregnancy. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Omaha, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Omaha Black Maternal Health Month. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 30th day of September 2025. And if you can remain there, I'll come up and we'll take a quick photo and we'll move on to the next proclamation. Thank you.
At this time, I will read a proclamation for Tom Riley. If you want to come down, please, the Riley family. You're not under oath either, so.
Not yet.
Whereas Thomas C. Riley was born on April 22nd, 1950, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and attended St. Mary's College in Vermont before attending.
St. Michael's.
Before attending.
I'm under oath.
Yes. Have him gagged, Sergeant in Arms. Before attending Creighton University School of Law and graduating in 1975 with his law degree. And whereas, on September 16th, 1975, Tom Riley began a 50-year career with the Douglas County Public Defender's Office, representing people charged with crimes who cannot afford their own attorneys. And whereas, Tom Riley was first elected the Douglas County Public Defender in 1996 and was re-elected in every election since, most recently in 2024. And whereas, he and his wife of 48 years, Marcia, have lived in the Cathedral neighborhood for 48 years and raised eight children, Brendan, Connor, Maggie, Maureen, Patricia, Eileen, Claire, and Kyron, who have given him five grandchildren with more on the way to adore. And whereas, Tom Riley is a shining example of commitment to public service and the people he represents and job he has dedicated 50 years of his life, working tirelessly as a fierce and zealous advocate who has shown his steadfast commitment to people's constitutional rights and the integrity of the criminal justice system. And whereas, Tom Riley is an example to those in his office, a mentor to countless attorneys, and is willing always to fight the good fight. And he is respected by prosecutors, law enforcement, judges, and the legal community because of the respect he has earned these past 50 years. And I'll also add council members to that as well. Whereas, the City of Omaha is fortunate to have a man like Tom Riley serve as a public defender, and his 50-year commitment to that office is an example for all of us. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Omaha, do hereby proclaim September 30th as Tom Riley Day in the City of Omaha. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 30th day of September 2025.
Appreciate it. I'm honored.
And I think we have one more award for you as well. Mayor John Ewing is here today as well. Don't go anywhere.
Good afternoon, President Begley, Vice President Harding, and council members. Good afternoon, guests. As many of you know, I talk a lot about public service. I believe it to be one of the highest callings in life, a vocation really to devote your time, talent, and energy to service to our brothers and sisters and service to our shared community. I am proud of my almost 44 years in public service and believe that calling to have been and continue to believe that is personally fulfilling for me. Now, 44 years is a lot of years. It's half a lifetime if we're lucky. But today, I want to celebrate someone who tops that number. Tom Riley, our public, our Douglas County Public Defender for 50 years. Fifty years, that's not a half a lifetime. That's half a century. And while the number is impressive, it shows stability, it shows community, it shows continuity, it shows that this Massachusetts native and Creighton Law graduate didn't jump ship after a few years in the trenches to earn big bucks in fancy firms, nor did he ditch the legal profession or the Dubliner, Dublin, Dubliner stage to pursue the, becoming the American version of Bono. He stayed. I talk about vocation and want to highlight just how important it is that Tom Riley stayed. They say a measure of a community is how he cares for the most vulnerable. The people he serves represent that. They are the accused. Sometimes, they are the shunned. They are the people that society tends to throw away. Of course, our system demands that they get representation. Tom Riley's singular devotion to this calling has meant quality representation and would be the kind of representation that each of us would want if we were in the defendant's shoes. Tom Riley is a public defender. It is among the most notable titles I can think of to defend those who cannot afford to defend themselves. Thank you, Tom, for 50 years of service. Thank you for your life's work. Thank you for inspiring your colleagues and generations of attorneys. And I would like to present you with the key to the city.
Item six, to consider a Class II liquor license for Iceball Lash Nail Lounge located at 14158 West Center Road.
I'll open the public hearing on item number six. Is the applicant here today? Applicant is on Zoom. Mr. Pham, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address, please?
My name is Danny Pham. My address is 14158 West Center Road, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today, item number six?
No.
Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. Row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 7 through nine can be considered together for Class K catering liquor licenses for Hy-Vee locations at 5150 Center Street, 10808 Fort Street, and 9707 Q Street.
I will open the public hearing on items seven through nine. Is the applicant on Zoom there? Mr. Hamilton?
May I?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Can we get your name and address, please?
Chris Hamilton, 10019 Edgewater Lane, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve all three, seven through here.
And a motion and a second. Row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 10, to consider a Class C liquor license for Crafted Ramen Misolato located at 7425 Dodge Street, Suite 105.
Public hearing on item number 10 is open. Mr. Houghton, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. David A. Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of Yale USA Inc., doing business as Crafted Ramen Misolato, which is located at 7425 Dodge Street, Suite 105, for their Class C liquor license. This will be the second location. They have a similar location in Overland Park, Kansas. The hours of operation will be noon to nine, and it's a ramen noodle restaurant bar concept. If the council has any other questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 11, to consider a Class C liquor license for the White House located at 7768 Cass Street.
Public hearing is now open on item number 11. Applicant, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Adams, and I'm here with my partners in the partnership known as, my son-in-law, Tony Vandenbosch, married my eldest daughter, Brian Adams, my son married my, or his daughter-in-law. TJ Orr married my third daughter, and my fourth one was smart enough not to get into this business. But we have acquired the White House at 7768 Cass Street and hope to have a family affair with this thing. Happy to answer and respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Opponents?
Yes, sir. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, 4928 North 52nd, 52nd Street, and the Northern Hall. And we would like to look at this process. Are you gentlemen and ladies on the City Council aware that we've lost three commissioners down in Lincoln? They fired him. The governor fired two, and one had to go to jail, or he's on his way to jail. So this family here, I'm not opposing this family. I love the castle. It's a beautiful building. But who's going to be the next appointee of that liquor commission down in Lincoln? Was it one of these gentlemen or someone from Northern Hall? We'll put Ms. Levon, Goodwin, name up.
You'll have to talk to the governor about that, Donnie. Thank you for being here today. Is there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Scott, if you would come up just for one more minute. Good to see you again, and thanks for being here with the family. This is a longtime location in my district, so it sounds like just a transfer of license. Anything new to the business you'd describe?
So we have a great deal of experience in terms of operating and managing bars, especially with TJ and Tony. The current, the prior owner that we bought it from is a guy in his mid-70s and just got tired of the business. And we happen to be kind of in the right place at the right time as a result of fantasy baseball. And so came upon the opportunity and decided to jump in.
Great. Nothing else changes? Hours, the name?
You know, the only other thing that will change is the result of, their menu had been hamburgers and fries and that kind of thing. In transfer of ownership, you of course come up to current code and standards for plumbing and things. And so that is changing our menu from a fried menu to pizza and things that don't require grease trap in the sewer. So we've had conversations with city plumber and things like that. And so we'll be changing our menu.
Great. Thanks. Look forward to checking it out.
Yeah.
Support this today.
Thank you.
And to the comment about the liquor commission, I just wanted to observe that with, the council has talked about that, and the city clerk has sent an inquiry to the state about that. Certainly, they are in transition right now and need to appoint some new members, but we've been informed that will not impact liquor licenses coming through the city council, including yours, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate knowing that. The Liquor Control Commission has been very helpful along the way with our process and professional in every step, but I wasn't dealing with the head of it, so.
Great. Thank you.
I understand.
I'll motion to approve.
Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Fest, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Scott, I'll just have you come up one more time. But I was in there recently, and I'm glad you brought that up. The one thing I am...
You're our third customer.
What's that?
You are our third customer.
I don't know if I was the third paying customer, though. Anyway, I'm sorry that we weren't going to be able to continue the tradition of the Philly sandwiches there because I think the White House was really...
Yeah, it was a good one.
Yeah. But I know you have some plans for the upstairs, too, some other things to make it more enjoyable for more people to enjoy. So good luck.
Yeah, thank you so very much. Appreciate that.
No further lights. Row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 12, to consider a Class D liquor license for bottles and brews located at 10745 Mockingbird Drive.
Public hearing is now open on item number 12. Is the applicant here today? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Matthew Stafford on behalf of the proponent, 808 P Street, Suite 300, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 13, to consider an addition application to the Class II liquor license for Phileas Cat Cafe and Rescue located at 5015 Dodge Street, Suite 101, to add an indoor and outdoor area.
Public hearing is now open on item number 13. The applicant is here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks. My name is Brianna Phalen, and the address is 5015 Dodge Street, Suite 101, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Public, I'm sorry, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I, can we get a motion? It's in my district. Got, and I'll second that. I got a couple of questions, Ms. Phalen. Thanks for being here today.
Absolutely.
Are the hours going to change at all? Tell us, and you reach out to the neighborhood network of people. How did that go?
Yeah, it went great, actually. I received just a couple of comments back wishing luck. But our hours are actually shortening a little bit, so the latest will be open at 8 o'clock.
Okay.
We want to keep that, like, very specific because we want to be respectful of the neighborhood.
Okay. Well, thanks for being down here today, and I wish you continued success there.
Thank you.
There are no further lights. We'll do a row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3908 Chicago Street from R. 3 District to R. 5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing is now open on item number 14. Is the applicant here today? Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved. Second.
Row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 15, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 1125, 1121, 1115, and 1111 North 18th Street, and 1726 Nicholas Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing is open on item number 15. Is the applicant here today? Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 16, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUR overlay district located at 3315 South 70th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing is open on item number 16. Are there any proponents here? Is the applicant Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 17, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the City of Omaha's master plan to incorporate the new Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan.
Public hearing is open on item number 17. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Jake Linder, Omaha Parks, 1819 Farnham, and I'm here in support of the master plan.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here?
Good afternoon, President. City Council, Dan Cedar, Parks and Recreation Department. We are seeking approval for the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. This is a vision for the next 20 years for our department. This will also become a component of the We Make Omaha, Omaha City Comprehensive Plan. About 14 months ago, we awarded the contract to Barry Dunn, who is a national consulting firm specializing in parks and recreation, to complete the plan. They also worked with Virio LLC, a local landscape architect firm, as a component of the master plan, who specifically looked at our park maintenance. They did an assessment of our overall level of service, as well as looking at the trails connectivity plan. What I'd like to do now is just turn the time over to Teresa Jackson, who is the project manager from Barry Dunn. And she has a short 10 to 15-minute presentation to just give you an overview of the plan, what those next steps are. And I'm also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. President, council members, it's a pleasure to be here with you again. I'm just going to queue up a PowerPoint here. It should just take a moment. Can you hear me okay? I know last time it was a little tough.
You're good. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
Teresa Jackson, 2886 Riverside Drive, Lyons, Colorado. We had other proponents who were here. Should they speak before I present?
You can go ahead first.
I'll just go ahead. Okay. So today, I wanted to just take a little bit of time to highlight some key aspects of the planning process, as well as our key findings. It's a 20-year plan that's intended to really be that 10,000-foot view of the system and provide a roadmap for the future. So there were several key components that we identified early in the planning process that were really a priority for the department. Some of those are very traditional in master plans, and some were a bit unique, but the department understood they were key things that were needed to propel the department forward into the future, and to also gain some understanding in how to really better their system, and to meet the needs of the community. So the six key things that were very critical to the success of the planning effort was first and foremost, community engagement. I'll go through some of that detail shortly. Additionally, we evaluated operations, so took a look at both staffing as well as funding, and compared those resources to national standards, as well as identified cities of comparable size. We also assessed recreation programs, so taking a look at the various offerings, participation, location, and trends. We did a comprehensive park inventory and assessment, so we're out in the parks, taking a look at specific amenities to understand both park conditions as well as distribution. And then those two add-ons that were very critical to the department, as well as the community, as we learned through engagement, was developing a trail connectivity plan. So there's over 130 miles of trail here in the city, but there's missing segments, so identifying those segments and prioritizing them. And then last but not least, we took a look at the current maintenance practices and developed some standards for the future. And another key item I'll hone in on is the map on the right. For this planning effort, we wanted to divide the city, in a sense, to really understand the needs of different areas of the community. And so we used maintenance districts, which is what the department uses for their services. And so that map there is showing an overlay of how those maintenance districts correspond with council districts. So typically, a maintenance district is covering two, sometimes even three, council districts. So touching on community engagement, when we sat down with the department and we talked about some of their goals, we identified some key things to really guide that engagement. And first, they wanted to build awareness. And so we developed a brand, Omaha Outdoors: Opportunity Awaits. And so over the course of engagement, we were pushing out that brand, that logo, to try to generate some excitement. Through engagement, the department, of course, wanted to gather input, but also to develop a plan that was really guided by that input. And I think we were very successful in doing that. In addition to that, they wanted to promote inclusivity. And so we used a mixed method of engagement to really try to meet people where they were. And then they wanted to develop strength and trust, so really through transparency and communication throughout the planning effort. So looking at the community engagement, I mentioned it was a mixed method. So we had our project website, which generated over 8,000 visits. We had our statistical survey, which had great success with almost 1,000 respondents. The survey was not weighted. We used those subareas I referenced earlier, and those were compared to the demographics of each maintenance district to ensure that they were reflective of the residents that lived there. In addition to the survey, we were out in the community, we were at 15 different events, we had a number of focus group sessions with system users, we conducted stakeholder interviews, and we had a couple of open houses. And that engagement primarily took place between July and November of 2024. So what did we hear from the community? So when we're out in the community, you typically get to a point in your engagement where you start to hear the same thing over and over again, and that really can provide you with a lot of direction. So a couple of key things that we heard from your community here in Omaha was really this desire to maintain and improve existing parks and facilities. Tied to that, we heard quite a bit about addressing staffing and maintenance challenges. So those two aspects kind of go hand in hand, depending on the user group you're speaking with. We also heard about expanding access to programs, especially in the realm of summer camps, fitness, and nature-based opportunities. And that kind of dovetails into that create a more equitable distribution of services. When we think about our summer camps, they're in very select locations. At this juncture, they're not spread throughout Omaha. And then last but not least, we heard quite a bit of trails, that there was a desire for improved connectivity, as well as year-round access. So just taking a quick look at a couple of survey questions, we provided community members with a list of items that they would like to see emphasis put on in the next five years. And you can see, sitting way up there at the top, at 53% is maintaining our parks. So you're going to see this constant theme, really, of taking care of what we have here in Omaha. Another question we asked, we said if we gave you $100, kind of your tax dollars of work, at work, how would you spend those dollars against these five categories? And what rose to the top, at $35, is addressing deferred maintenance of existing parks, trails, and facilities. And just behind it, at $27, is updating and renovating more of our vertical assets and our pools. So again, that reinvestment is key to the community. So earlier, I mentioned that we were out in the parks and we conducted a park inventory. So I wanted to touch on this lightly, just so there's a good understanding of how in-depth it was, and how the department has been left with some tools that they can use in the future. So we had teams out in the parks who were grading five specific components, so picnic shelters, restrooms, playgrounds, splash pads, and sports courts. So we could really understand the quality and condition of those amenities, so that we have an understanding as to when they're coming due for replacement. In addition to that, each park was scored. So we looked at the character of the park, the accessibility, which includes things such as parking and signage, we looked at how it connects and links to neighborhoods, and then we looked at usability. So if the amenities in the park are what would support community use, if you will. And so ultimately, just at a glance, when you look at this Maintenance District 9, where you see a green park, it's in good condition; where you see yellow, it's fair; and where you see red, it's poor. So at a glance, you can start to look at the system and quickly identify those parks that have some challenges based on those scores and those specific amenities, and ultimately, kind of grading those parks against each other across the system. And we've got over 200 parks, and so the subarea approach really helps to tell the story about each area of the community. So ultimately, our key findings, which are a result of our analysis work, combined with what we learned from the community, they really aligned well. So ultimately, the key findings, the five that we identified that ultimately led to the development of priorities for the future and goals, were first, organizational capacity is stretched. So through analysis and looking at the FTE count, as well as funding and our benchmarking, as well as what we heard from the community, we recognize that resources are stretched then. Over 50% of the workforce is in a part-time capacity, which will impact consistency of services. Another key finding is recreation services are uneven. So we have great success in some locations, and others, those numbers aren't there. And so are the right services being provided? And so those specific goals and action items support better distribution of programs. And then access and quality vary across Omaha, so most residents do live near a park. With over 200 parks, we have great access, but the quality of parks does vary, so we have recommendations associated with that. Trail connectivity is incomplete. I referenced that 130 miles of trails, which is significant. We identified 154 trail segments that are needed to complete that system, and so we've prioritized those. And then maintenance is a system-wide concern. So we consistently heard from our residents that there is a need to improve maintenance. We also, when we look at national benchmarks, found that the current per-acre funding is below what we would typically see of an agency. So taking just briefly a quick look at the five priority areas, across the five priority areas, we have 15 goals, and then there are many action items in the department to help guide the department in being successful in those goals and ultimately those priorities. So first, we need to build organizational capacity, so really strengthening our internal operations, our workforce, and our partnerships to deliver a more sustainable system. And so just to kind of give you a sense of some of those goals, we have invest in the future of park maintenance. So that's come up a lot. And so some of the action items are very specific in how we can take steps to do that into the future. Priority two, secure sustainable funding. So it's going to take dollars to do this. And when we talk about that shortfall and what's being spent per acre, we identified it somewhere around $5 million less than what other agencies are spending. And so we do have some adjustments or goals and action items related to a park district assessment, as well as general obligation bonds. Looking at priority three, expand access to underserved areas. There were a couple of areas, very few, but there are about five that exist across the city where there isn't easy access to a park. There's lots of parcels across the city that are owned by the city that could potentially be developed into a park at a later date. And so we have identified those, so that we're providing that equal access to quality parks, trails, and facilities. Also, implementing the trail segments over time can increase your access to those underserved areas. Priority four, take care of existing assets. So here, our goals really focus on having individuals who are specialized, so having teams that really focus specifically on sports facility maintenance, or tree maintenance, or the trail system, and really expanding your FTEs in those realms to improve the quality of those facilities. And then our last priority, priority five, expand recreation access and participation. So the department has been equipped with a good understanding of what pools and community centers are performing at a very high level, as well as those that maybe aren't. And so what adjustments can be made to really grow participation in some of those facilities that are as successful as others? Can we modify our programming to better meet the needs of the community? Thank you. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here to speak today?
Eric, excuse me, Eric England, Planning Department. I just wanted to come up here on behalf, I know Dan Cedar had mentioned, you know, the We Make Omaha Comprehensive Plan update, so we've been coordinating with the Parks team, and we feel this will be easily added into the Comprehensive Plan update when that's finalized next year. So I just want to voice the support.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Nancy Garter. I'm the president of the Miller Park Minnaluca Neighborhood Association, and I want to take a minute to thank Councilwoman Goodwin for coming up and touring our neighborhoods, seeing our issues. And I want to thank Mayor Ewing for implementing better care of our parks and streets. We've noticed a difference since he took office. Parks, Miller Park, Minnaluca Boulevard, Florence Boulevard, the Riverfront Trail are the heart of our neighborhood, so we feel the highs and lows of the city's parks system every day. If we step outside our homes and the Boulevard hasn't been mowed, as has often been the case, we feel that demoralizing effect. And when money is invested in the parks, as was the case at Miller Park with Lozier Foundation, we experience the Renaissance that follows. Thus, we know that when money is invested in parks, it builds community, and lack of investment leads to, is wearing. We support and endorse this master plan, but we would like to highlight its findings that Omaha's parks are severely underfunded, that it's understaffed, and that the staff is there, is almost, too many of them are part-time workers. So we request that the city council work with the mayor in finding a way to better fund our park system. We do believe that Omaha will benefit, and studies have shown that communities benefit from investment in parks. I'll make a note of the fact that last year's parks budget didn't keep pace with inflation, and this year's park budget sustained a cut, for reasons I realize you understand, but it's nonetheless a cut compared to other departments that didn't have a cut in their budget. And I will send a couple of photos to you all that show what our neighborhood experienced last year following the multiple storms that devastated our city, and the photos speak for themselves. I want to make one note on the trail study here. I understand, I heard there's 154 trail segments that were needed. This study highlights 20 priority trails. We have an orphan connection in the Miller Park Minnaluca neighborhood that I'd like to call the city's attention to. The Riverfront Trail runs from downtown up to Boyer Shoot in Washington County, passing Miller Park, Minnaluca, and Florence. None of those neighborhoods have safe access to the trail. And so we'd like to see some crossings, pedestrian crossings on Pershing Boulevard, so that the residents of Florence, Miller Park, and Minnaluca can safely get to the trail and use it. That didn't make the top 20 priorities for technical reasons, I believe, because it was tied for number two a couple of years ago in top priority for neighborhood connections in a study that the city participated in. So that's really what I have to say. Please do find a way to fund our parks. We'll support you in any way we can, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you. And can we get your address for the record, Ms. Carter?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. 2720 Iowa Street.
Thank you. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Is there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Mary Minter, 3416 Hawthorne Avenue, 68131. I live in the Bemis Park neighborhood, and I just want to let the Parks Department, and it's Barry Dunn, for their work on this master plan for the parks. And I'm hoping that the areas that were discovered that are possibilities for development into parks and recreation facilities might include the MUD Walnut Hill Reservoir, which will probably come up for sale next, maybe next fall. I talked to Mark Mendenhall, MUD General Counsel, today, and he said that although they didn't get the Brownfields grant that they had applied for last year to destruct the reservoirs, they will be going into their general funds to do that next spring. So that property will be coming available. There's no really other property that big in the area that could be developed into a Parks and Rec facility. We are really kind of overlooked and underserved in that regard. A Parks and Rec facility would serve not only Bemis Park, but Walnut Hill, Orchard Hill, Gifford Park, probably Jocelyn Castle, a lot of neighborhoods. We have lots of children in the neighborhood. I had talked to Pace recently to see what they thought of that idea, and they said that, well, you know, that'd be great, we're trying to start a basketball program at Walnut Hill School, and that would help them with that program. So I just, I know it's a big money issue, but we, as neighborhoods, feel like it would be a benefit for our children and their health and the families. And since we have such diverse communities in the area, we feel like it would be a great way to cross cultural barriers, so we have a space for us to all come together. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here?
Hello, I'm Tiffany Regan, and I'm with the Omaha Parks Foundation. 550 Turner Boulevard is our physical address. Just want first and foremost, say thank you to all of you for taking time with the master plan. Thank you to the Parks Department for diving in deep, and thank you for the proponents being here today. We're pleased to say that we've been helping on the side those parks you're representing today. We truly appreciate the recognition that parks, playgrounds, and recreation infrastructure, they play a vital role in Omaha, and their proven mental, social, physical, environmental, and economic benefits are extensive. Our slogan at the foundation is, "We're proud to be part of the progress, and we celebrate every improvement we make to Omaha's Parks and Rec system above and beyond what the tax dollars can do." But that's it. The baseline tax dollars do not keep up with what is existing now. And the pressure on the system needs to be addressed before we're in a position that we cannot return. Parks rank high in the citizens' quality of life. It's shown in the surveys. High-quality places attract workers, which attract employers, and families, which in turn attract more investments and jobs. Parks are for everyone, no matter their age, socioeconomic status, physical or mental ability, background, lifestyle, or beliefs. Again, we thank the PRPP and its stakeholders. Now that we have honest, unbiased information in front of us, we now need your help and the leadership from the city and constituents to make a plan to execute. The Omaha Parks Foundation is ready to assist, and many community members are ready to become involved, too, to make our parks and trails a better place in Omaha. So thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents here today on item 17? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson &amp; Christian Foundation, and Northern Hall Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. I know a lot of these young folks weren't born when Mr. Jerry Parks controlled parking and recreation, and I was with the Mancusels at Civic Auditorium in Rosen Black. And you folks probably don't remember that parks used to be 24 hours a day. It was, some of the things that happened in our generation, they closed at 11 o'clock. Some everybody started Rosen Black with that streaking, and the hippies, and they closed them. I'm more interested in taking some of the parks that the city don't want. All those homeless folks, we're gonna put them in the park, and you're gonna stay in the park, and we're gonna move it back to 24 hours a day. That's the only one. If you got a park you don't want, instead of letting them stay on the street, let them go back to the park, because that's what it had in the first place. And some of them, and I was a friend, the Northern Irish, Little Shorty's, in 1967, went in the park, we used to have firecrackers at Fountainelle, and we could start a fire at 3:00 in the morning without going to jail, in the park, till all the hippies screwed it up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here today? Seeing none, public?
Louis, 2309 Dewey Avenue. I'm not confident in the process that was undertaken, especially because We Make Omaha is still developing, and this is billed as a master plan, so I don't know how that's going to be incorporated with We Make Omaha when We Make Omaha is saying you're going to be part of a master plan with the city. So if this is something that We Make Omaha can share with the community and be like, is there any improvements to be had? That'd be nice. And then about peace and prosperity with parks, I think the Green Street concept would have more of an impact for the city than continually maintaining parks that, you know, you're not going to fund right away for maintenance. Maybe the mayor may think of something, but a lot of money is going to have to be put into maintenance, and I don't think there's a magic wand for this. So I think that having more community input is important, and looking at the Parks Department and how they're managing parks. So one idea that I have is with the riverfront being, their maintenance being handed off to MECA, how come there isn't a point person within the city that monitors the contract to be sure that those things are happening? And then learning from how MECA is maintaining the riverfront and sharing those concepts or practices with the, with the Parks Department. So I think that there isn't money for upkeeping the parks, and then we really should be looking at how the system works within the department. Thank you.
Thanks. Can you verify your address for us, Louise, for the record?
2709 Dewey Avenue.
Okay, thanks.
Why, why do I need to verify that? What's that?
He didn't say that.
Oh, okay. What did I say?
He wasn't there.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other opponents here today? Item 17. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Fesserson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thank you all for this master plan completion. I'm pleased to have a quantification of our system and an evaluation of our system in some great detail here, even park by park and park district by park district. The findings are not surprising to me in that we have, I've always thought we've had a lot of great parks in this city, but that park maintenance could be done much better. That clearly shows through in your findings, and that we have lots of trails, but they aren't exactly all connected the way they should be to really make it an effective tool throughout our city. And I think there's nothing much more we can do that's more impactful than improving our park system and improving the maintenance of our system has a direct impact on quality of life and sense of place. Also, what you've identified here is a pretty big goal in terms of addressing that issue. I believe in our discussions this morning, it was about $5 million more in our competitive set for park maintenance throughout the community, and about $4.5 million when it comes to capital improvements, and that's an annual number. So it's a big number for us to work on, but I think it's important we pursue that. We do have lots of plans as a city right now, but for me, this is one of the most important ones, and I think it's incumbent upon us to work with the private sector and philanthropy too, to help address these issues. We do have success in doing that as a community. I see Katie Bassett in the audience here. But I think there's a real opportunity to do that, if we can come together around this vision. And I just also thank Tiffany Regan for her work with the Parks Foundation. The very first park we worked on together, which became the impetus for the new Parks Foundation, was Metcalf Park. And that was an ambitious goal for us at the time, but it was $100,000 in city money, and about $100,000 raised from the private sector to match it. And that had a transformational impact on that neighborhood. I think it's a great example of what we're talking about here. So I'm in support of this today, and I'll motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Fesserson?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Melton?
Row.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve the Charles Street Town Homes Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located west of 28th and Charles Streets in an amount up to $247,563.
Public hearing is now open on item number 18. Mr. Seaton, good afternoon.
Yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning. This is a small residential infill project, be constructed on vacant lots in North Omaha near 28th and Charles. The developer, Justin Moore, will build four market rate rental units. The investment in the neighborhood is about $1.6 million. TIF support requested is $247,563. Project's been approved by the TIF Committee, City Planning Board. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and we ask for your support.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment that I think that this is a project moving in the right direction for infill development in my district. Not only that, market rate housing, I know we need housing at all levels, and in order to continue the neighborhood vitality that's necessary for parts of my district, I think that this is a step in the right direction. I also wanted to point out that this is a small and emerging developer that is from the community, so I think this just checks a lot of really positive boxes that people want to see. Number one, vacant lots, productive, various types of housing options with developers when they can be coming from the community. So those are my comments, and I'd like to motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Fesserson?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Melton? Row.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items 19 through 23 were held on September 16, 2025. Any council discussion? Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Fesserson?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Row. Mr. President?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items 24 through 34 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you're a proponent or opponent. I will open the public hearing. Are there any proponents here today? Items 24 through 34. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Sorry.
You read it, did it already?
Sorry, Donnie, I didn't see you getting up. You can speak if you'd like.
Well, thank you, sir. I was just gonna figure something out here. You know, like, Donnie Hart Johnson, the Johnson E. Queston Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I've been noticing all these annexes the last several years. And number 24 here, I still believe there's going to be some problem with that liquor commission down in Lincoln. So have we really benefited from Mayor Fahy, Mayor, and last mayor, annexing these other communities? Because I don't think they're paying their fair share in this annexation of these subdivisions, especially Elkhorn.
Donnie, can we get your address again for the record for these items? Thank you.
4928 North 52nd Street, but I believe if Mr. Harding gets to Washington DC, I'm gonna get a new address.
No other speakers. We had a motion and a second. Roll call.
Fesserson?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Row. Mr. President?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 35, an ordinance to add sections to Chapter 20 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled "Unauthorized Encampments on Public Property." To provide for rules and regulations for addressing unauthorized encampments on public property, A is communication and support, B is communications and opposition.
Council discussion. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Move delay over until October 21st.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Fesserson?
No.
Goodman?
No.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Row. Mr. President?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 36, an ordinance vacating a portion of 69th Street right-of-way as legally described on the agenda. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing is now open on item number 36. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 37, an ordinance to approve a purchase and sale agreement with the Builders District Parking LLC for the purchase of a parking, public parking facility in an amount not to exceed $27,143,861. A is communication and opposition.
Public hearing is now open on item number 37. Ms. Taylor, good afternoon, for proponents.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. I just wanted to give a couple of points to explain what this particular agreement is and what we're doing here. Mr. Naughtle is also in the audience and is happy to answer any questions you might have. In October of 2018, the City Council approved a redevelopment plan for the area that we know is the Builders District. So that plan proposed some residential, office, retail developments that would occur within that district anchored by, obviously, the Kiwet Headquarters Building. The idea is to fill that area as kind of a connection between Creighton and what we have going on downtown with the CHI Center and the Ball Field and all the development we have there. So it's a good way to kind of infill that, that gap of area. As part of that redevelopment plan, the city also approved a redevelopment agreement with Mr. Naughtle and ultimately was assigned to Kiwet. Part of that agreement indicated that the city agreed to construct a parking facility in the area at such time as a third-party parking study demonstrated there would be a need for such facility, and that that facility would be built, paid for, constructed, et cetera pursuant to the terms of a separate agreement. This is that separate agreement. So what we have here is, we have a third-party, third-party parking study that has been done by Walker, which demonstrates that the development that has currently been completed within the area and that Mr. Naughtle proposes will support and necessitate a parking facility to be located in, in the neighborhood. The facility that we are proposing, we have worked through plans and specs, we have those established. Walker's been working with the city on this. We will be constructing a 500, just over 550-stall parking facility with a retail bay. The Urban Design Review Board has actually reviewed the plans and approved them. And as far as the terms of the agreement, I'm happy to answer any questions. I would note to the council that we will be obligated to acquire the facility once construction is complete. Construction must be done pursuant to those plans and specs. It must be acceptable to the city. It must be substantially complete and CO'd, and that Mr. Naughtle has committed to furthering accomplishing the additional development that is necessary in order to support that facility, and we will work together to make sure that happens. So those are kind of the specifics of the agreement, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks. A couple of questions while you're standing there, Jen. Is this any, this is similar to what we've done in other garages in the city, correct?
This is similar to what we've done in Blackstone. It's similar to what we actually have doing at UNMC. That parking facility is actually substantially complete, and we will be taking ownership of that shortly. So it is similar to what we've done with other facilities.
Okay.
It will be an entirely public facility. It will be city-run, city-managed, city-operated. So it is a public parking facility that will be operated by Park Omaha.
And where do the fees go collected? Where do those fees go?
The revenue that is generated by parking facilities like this will go into the city's Parking Enterprise Fund, which is obviously a special set-aside fund that funds parking operations as well as operation and maintenance for parking facilities, and ultimately at some day, the streetcar.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other proponents here?
Good afternoon, President Begley, members of the council, city staff. I'm Jay Naughtle with Naughtle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. I'm pleased to be here today. We had planned to be here a few years ago, but this thing called the pandemic slowed us down a little bit. But as Ms. Taylor mentioned, development in the Builders District is well underway. In fact, the first building that will use this garage is complete. And in fact, Naughtle Development Company is moving its headquarters to that building along with several other tenants. We'll be moving in October. We will still have a significant presence in Exarban Village, but we have felt that it would be best for us to be in the middle of the Builders District as the balance of the neighborhood develops. Very similar to what we did at the First National Business Park, at One Pacific Place, and at Exarban Village over the years, we find that if we are there every day, early in the morning, late in the evening, there on the weekends, we have a much better handle on what's happening in the neighborhood, and it's also much easier for us to execute future projects. And I'm pleased to tell you today that we have a number of projects in various stages of design for the neighborhood that include more office space, retail spaces, several varieties of living space, and a hotel. And all of that, combined with the terrific announcements that were made by Creighton University in the last 10 days, really puts this part of north downtown between Creighton and the CHI Center, south of Coming, in a terrific position to continue to develop and fill out over the next handful of years. So we're glad to finally be here. Costs and tariff fears and things like that slowed us down a little bit, but we are here and we are all moving, so we're very hopeful that you will approve this next week so that garage construction can begin. And sooner rather than later, many of our tenants will have a nice new parking structure to pay lease payments in to the city and to have a safe place for us to be. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other proponents here today on item 37? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I would like to add my name to the letter of opposition that you already have from Rick Fulton. That has to do with Mr. Naughtle and the Naughtle Companies, but it's all because of the lack of transparency around this type of project and TIF projects. We are, we citizens are suspicious that there's conflicts of interest here because of the lack of conversation. Now, she won't ask him direct questions, she'll ask me questions, but this needs to be more open with the citizens so that we don't get these impressions. I remember when he got TIF financing for townhomes on about 50th and Leavenworth. up that he had his real estate company name on those for sale. Not necessarily affordable housing, was it? Then all of a sudden, somebody else is actually selling them. But he is a real estate company as well as a developer. There is some conflict of interest there, ladies and gentlemen. It seems that way, maybe because of the lack of transparency. If I am wrong, I apologize. But that's not my fault that that's the way we perceive it. Mr. Fulton's letter is the way that it's perceived. Please answer yourselves to those questions. Don't let us continue to suspect Mr. Naughtle and Company. We suspect you guys more, Planning Department more. It's all decided before it gets here. I'm only saying, please, we're not against everything good in Omaha. We're against the way it's done sometimes. And sometimes, because it does increase my taxes, and you deny that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here today? Item 37. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Can you come back up? And again, it's always the use of taxpayer dollars. Could you please confirm this is going to be paid for by the revenue that the parking garage will make? This property taxes are not paying for this.
Correct.
And in fact, that's what we do with all of our parking garages.
Correct.
And it goes into what you refer to as the Enterprise Fund. We're restricted. We cannot use the Enterprise Fund revenue for anything else. We can't, Parks needs an extra $5 million. We can't take the money out of the Enterprise Fund to do maintenance for parks, right?
We cannot.
We can't fill potholes.
We cannot.
We can only use that for parking, parking garages, the maintenance of parking garages. I mean, that's what those funds can be used for.
Correct.
And that's by law, by state law.
Correct.
And I think that's very clear. It's in state statutes, and we have been doing it since well before I was ever even on the council. And I want to also state, this isn't something new that we're trying to roll over people, because actually, we had this public hearing and discussed this seven years ago, correct?
Also, correct.
So we've been discussing this for seven years.
And Mr. Naughtle, and we've been working on the development in that area for quite some time, and we've made some progress. And so these are things that we've been having conversations about for quite some time.
And again, the city doesn't need to worry about the funding, and it's not making anybody, not only is it not making anybody's taxes go up, it's, we're not even using property taxes for it.
We are not. This is all funded from the Enterprise Fund.
Thank you very much.
Your word.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 38 through 69, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Got a motion adjourned in a second. Roll call.
Fesserson?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:12.